Call the meeting to order tonight when we stand to say the pledge, please remember the events from seventeen years ago on September eleventh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
September Wallace?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Erickson?
Miller?
Yes.
Yes. Citizen comments, anyone would like to approach the council, now's a good time to do that. Seeing that, we have no public hearings, we have reading and approval of minutes from last meeting. Did everybody get a regular meeting minutes? Cause I got two of them.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay. I was looking at them, it's like, man, these condensed ones are exactly the same.
They just don't condense like they used to.
Do you get two regulars?
I got two regulars.
You got two regulars also?
Yeah.
Well, it says regular, but I think it's actually condensed.
Yeah, condensed version is one page and the other one is two pages.
I will hold approval of the regular minutes from our August twenty eighth meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. And we have the condensed version.
I move approval of the condensed version of the minutes out of August twenty eighth.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, pay estimate number twelve for Magny Construction for the water treatment plant, and the August transit report for, yeah, August transit report. I will move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any questions on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Just maybe a couple quick questions on the thinking of the fire hall plate, how did we arrive at that company to do that? Did we get new bids at all, or was that just a company that was selected?
Um, Dave Dibdahl looked at companies to come in and do that.
He did the process.
Yep.
I drove by that, what was the original color? I can't remember.
It was like brown.
It was beige.
With brown trim on top.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Much better, I like that.
It's a specialty paint, he actually painted Dave's workplace out there, it's an outfit out of Alec, and they use an extra special paint that's supposedly gonna hold up longer, and then it's not your run of the mill, I mean, they've painted it how many times, and two years down the road, it's looked pretty tough again, so hopefully this holds up.
Yeah, it's good to spend money and get a good job.
Yeah, the red integrates nicely.
I had lots of comments from different people as they were priming and doing things, oh my god, the colors, and just relax, they're not done yet.
You know, even the red, when you had the first coat versus where it's at today, it just wasn't, it's like, ooh, that's kinda weird.
No, it looks nice.
No, it looks great.
Looks wonderful.
Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. Orders and resolutions, we have resolution approving the preliminary twenty eighteen tax levy for collection in twenty nineteen.
All right, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going through this, and if you have any questions, make sure you ask them, and then ideally, we talk about doing our budget work session, we'll sit down and go through it in more detail and ask questions. I actually do have a change already before you even get to it, and it has to do with the levy. One of the things that we're gonna do is do the financing for the fire truck, and I'm working with Ellers. What we're gonna do is a certificate of debt, which will be sold through the local banks. So one of the things that we're gonna be doing is having Ellers drop the term sheet that we can send out to the local banks to get quotes for certificates of debt, and working with Nick and Hunt from Ellers, and I think everybody knows him, he's been here before on our bond issues, he recommended that we put in sixty-five thousand in the preliminary levying instead of sixty, just to make sure we cover the interest and the financing on that certificate of debt. He thinks the interest rate's probably gonna be down further, the yields that the banks are fairly competitive on trying to do that, but, so that is a change. The one thing we can do, we can always reduce it down in December, but we can't raise it up, so if we wanna make sure that we have enough money in there, and ideally, we could probably raise up the debt levy and make notice to the state of Minnesota, but it's just easier to do this now.
So then the total levy is what, million six hundred thousand thirty-six?
Million six hundred thousand thirty-six. So with that, one of the things I addressed in here is the levy actually, originally when I gave my budget guidance to you to look at, I recommended that we looked at a levy between probably two and three percent more, and as I indicated in the memo to the city council, this levy is actually five point two percent more, plus we just added five thousand to it. But between now and December, there's a couple things that are left to be determined. We didn't allocate out at all, I didn't allocate all the capital outlay money out yet in this budget that I'm presenting to you. At the same time, we don't know right now what the insurance increase is gonna be, we estimated a ten percent increase in health insurance, and a five hundred dollar increase in the deductible, where the city picks up half of that deductible. We should find that out sometime, probably the end of this month, beginning of next month, what the rates are gonna be for the renewal, they're gonna be coming out, and then we'll be able to adjust that. I don't anticipate it's gonna be any more than what we put in the budget, I'm hoping it's gonna be less than what we put in the budget, and so we'll make that adjustment. And just, there's a couple items that I wanna sit down and take a look at as we get into the budget, putting together the final budget. So this preliminary levy, as you can see, is a million six hundred thousand dollars, there's a couple issues with some bond issues that we have, and what happens with bond issues is we get the initial bond information, and then we start levying money for the bonds, depending on what happens with special assessments, and money that comes in, we may pay down some of the bond upfront before we even bond, like we've done in the past few where we estimated what we thought was gonna come in, and there is a little bit of wiggle room yet where we can maybe look at adjusting, but not much on the bond issues right now. And the biggest change is that we're adding the fire truck to the debt levy. This levy includes three percent more for general fund, three percent more for the library fund, that's one of the things that we can adjust down by adjusting out some of the capital outlay money that we spend, and then we can come back to the general fund and adjust down the general levy, so that is one of the places that we look at doing that. So between now and December, I'm pretty confident that we're gonna be able to get that levy down to probably the three percent mark. As for the budget itself, the easiest budget to look at with regards to the overall spending in the city is the general fund budget, because it involves most of the things that we do as a city, and there's not a lot of fluctuation in the amounts in there. When you look at the overall city budget, that tends to fluctuate a lot, just because of the fact that we have bond issues in there, we have special revenue funds in there, we have, we're gonna add another fund for the fire truck probably, we'll probably create a new fund for that, and then it has the utility funds in there, the enterprise funds. So that overall, general fund budget, right now, we're looking at about a one point three percent increase in budget over this last year. Keeping in mind that the number one revenue source in the general fund is local government aid, and we got about three to four thousand dollars more on about a two point three million dollar local government aid. So our largest revenue source is not growing, and has been growing, and that's one of the things that we wanna stress for the upcoming legislative session, is that they really need to do something with local government aid. So that's the overall information about the budget, the actual overall budget grew at about six percent, but again, six point three percent, but that has some other things in there that make that look kinda, kinda out of the ordinary of what we should be doing, particularly when you look at the public utilities. So if we wanna, if we wanna look at this memo, I can answer any questions you have right now, otherwise I'll start going through some of the items on the list, I'm not gonna go through them all, but I can talk about some of the things that are included in this budget, if you want me to go ahead and start doing that.
We're talking, you're basically saying we're kinda looking at the capital outlay fund, where obviously we're gonna talk about it in our work session.
Right.
We do normally, and we're a little, not for sure on the insurance part of it, otherwise we're kinda, you're pretty much dialed in, you thought?
Right.
Get pretty close to that.
Yep. Fire truck, refresh me again, I guess I, we're gonna finance that through when we're purchasing it? No, we're gonna finance it through a local bank, probably.
The total works?
Okay, no, so the fire truck, the purchase price for the fire truck was about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we're gonna trade in a fire truck, we're getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar trade-in allowance for the truck that we're trading in, so that leaves a balance of five hundred thousand dollars. We haven't borrowed that money yet from any source, because the truck took a year to build it, and actually, I believe, I haven't talked to Dave lately, but we should take delivery of that sometime, probably in December, it might be after the first of the year, I know it's a little bit behind the last time I talked to Dave, so between now and when we take delivery, we have to actually borrow the money and have it in hand so we can pay that bill when it comes. And my plan is to do a certificate of debt, you can do up to ten years certificate of debt, you can do it through a local bank, you can actually just go out and solicit quotes from local banks for what their finance rate would be for financing the five hundred thousand dollars, and then we're allowed to levy back payments to pay off that certificate of debt to a local bank.
Okay, I just wasn't sure with some of the different equipment nowadays, with some of our air packs, we've leased with the option to own, and I know when we talked about, when we were looking at ordering the truck, that was possibly on the table, that we had some options of that type, I just wasn't sure if we were still considering possibly doing something like that, or your plans are to finance whatever's best.
The last big piece of equipment we bought was a loader, and we lease purchased it, and then when we levied the debt to pay back that lease purchase, we actually got called out by the state of Minnesota, and they said you can't show that as a debt levy, cause it's just a lease. So then you have to put it in the general fund as just an equipment lease within the general fund, or in our case, we use the capital outlay fund as the place where we track all the revenue and expenses for our equipment purchases. That's typically not a problem, unless there's levy limits, you know, and once you have it dialed into your levy, and your levy's high enough, then you don't have to worry about it. But if you do a certificate of debt, actually, that's probably tax exempt, and you're probably gonna get a better interest rate on it. So we'll see what the interest rates are, and then we'll go back to the truck company and just see if that's, you know, something that they could do, or...
An option that's still open, possibly. Okay, I just, with the interest to starting, it looks like climb the possibility of us to lock in or to have a favorable rate, that we've been through a pretty long stretch of extremely low interest rates.
Right. And Nick thinks that, you know, under four percent should still be a pretty good rate for a certificate of debt. If we did a GO bond, you might get even better rate, but at the same time, in order to sell bonds, there's a cost to doing that, there's a financing cost, it's, you know, the legal requirements that you have to put into, in the bond documents themselves are pretty substantial on most big projects, but this is just the, it's probably the best tool to be using when you're buying equipment like this.
Thank you.
Any other questions upfront on that? So then, I'll just walk through some of these and just point some stuff out, we talked about the levy already, if you go to the second page of the memo, I talked about revenue already, you know, we wanted to try to get the levy down to three percent, and that's still what the goal is that I have. I've given you all the information in here with regards to our budget and our capital improvement, and our capital outlay and all that. One of the things that happens in this budget, it's the first year we actually split out the public utility into two funds, so now we have a water fund, and we have a sewer fund, and Dave did a really good job of splitting out the expenses and the revenues, and actually, one of the things that we wound up doing is splitting up the reserves that were in those, in the utility fund between the two funds, and that's something that we're gonna keep an eye on as we move forward, cause it's not really easy to necessarily understand exactly what's sewer, exactly what's water, but at the same time, we can probably move money back and forth between the two of them, but because we got the financing for the water plant, we're required to have a fund for water, and that's the only reason we did it, is because they mandated that we have a separate fund for water, so that they can see the costs of water, both on the costs and the revenue side of the water. One of the things that I talked about in the memo is that the debt service on the water plant actually starts now, you know, and we haven't talked yet about when we're gonna implement rates for the new water plant. My recommendation is probably gonna be that we start doing that as the first of the year, so it's kinda like, we're already starting to pay for the car that we haven't got yet, and so, you know, there might be a question of, I'm not getting soft water, why am I paying for it? It's because we had to borrow the money to start building the plant, and we have to start paying it back. And one of the things, I think it's pretty much on schedule, I looked at the schedule I was provided upfront, they look at finishing the plant and starting it up probably sometime in March, April, and it looks like it's on schedule, everything we've heard is that it's on schedule with the contractors to have it finished and ready to be up and running. There are a couple things I talked to Chris Swanson about with regards to the water plant, as far as, we're gonna have to start looking at incorporating expenses that are gonna be coming up for the water plant, too, operational expenses, as well as the debt service costs that we're gonna have, so by the time we get to December, we'll have more of that laid out for you, so you can see that.
Have you been talking to Dan Coe at all about their coming online? I mean, do we have that pretty much?
Yeah, they have to, they have to by mandate of the state of Minnesota. So as soon as our plant is up and running, the state of Minnesota's gonna make them start buying water from us.
Okay.
Otherwise, they won't be open, you know, that is the mandate, they were supposed to do something prior to this, but we didn't have the capacity to be able to provide them the water.
Okay.
Otherwise, they would have to start buying water from us before. So yeah, that's all online, and we've looked at a rate and all that kinda stuff for them.
I've had some questions, I've had some questions from some people on some of the byproducts of our new plant, with being the lime, and just a curiosity of what our process is gonna be with getting rid of the lime, as it has some agriculture value.
They'll identify sources to get rid of it, too. That's gonna be part of the operational startup stuff, so it can either be outsourced to farmers, or if we can't find anybody that wants to take it, or we can provide it to, then it'll have to be landfill.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an asset to farmers, if a farmer is interested in, is it gonna be a process, somebody's responsible for that, is that our plans, or... Is there a contact, is there a contact person, or... The quantity, how much is it gonna generate approximately?
It'll be part of the operation of the plant.
I mean, when we get the end of the year, I would think by December, hopefully, I guess just some people looking for information and interested in probably having the trucking and getting rid of the lime and having a use for it, so if we talk to Chris to find out, I guess, the process, or if we can get some information and get somebody that's willing to come in and buy the lime from us, so we don't have to pay to get rid of it.
Right.
Or what the process there is, but there's several farmers have contacted me.
Yeah, that's part of it, so they can get ahold of me and...
And that's what I told them, that you would be the one that would know, but if I found out anything, or we'd discuss it, so...
Yeah, cause part of the startup is gonna be the, you know, learning to operate it, and the end process of that is what happens with the lime that's used in there, you know, it's gonna be processed for, you know, trucking out, that'll be the last step with it, and then whether it goes to a farmer, or it goes to a landfill, you know, will be determined what happens with it, but, yep.
We're basically about six months out there.
Yep.
We, as a group, don't we need to talk about this softener policy, how we're gonna make that transition, and how we've talked about different things, and how we're gonna transition from the old, you know, customer or citizens out there that have the old daytime system versus the new on-demand system? Do we need to be, I think, I guess my recommendation would be we start talking about that, so we have some sort of a policy in place.
Yeah, so actually, the Green Corps service member that's coming in October, that's gonna be one of the primary jobs of that person that comes on board, is to work on both the informational piece to property owners, and there's gonna be probably an inspection piece, getting in and inspecting each one of the properties to, number one, find out what they have, to make sure that they do transition into the new, I mean, there's gonna be a piece of legislation coming before the council, and actually, I've learned a lot more about the whole water softener system, to the point where I was down at the state fair and talking to the guy that runs the Eden Prairie plant, cause they soften at the plant, and there is actually information that needs to go out to people, that you don't wanna be softening soft water, you know, because if you soften soft water, you could damage your pipes, because of the process that's used, and the fact that there's just some technical things that we have to provide to people, you know, and we talked about bringing the water softener companies in into the fold, cause they pretty much know who their customers are, but the end result is gonna be that anybody that's got a water softener, it's gotta be of the new technology that can adjust the system to the new hardness of the water.
Are you gonna just make a cold line in the sand, say this has to happen now, or are we gonna grant five people in? I mean, my concern is this way, we have people out there that are on fixed incomes, and they have the old system, and then we're gonna require them to put in a new water softener, it might be a financial burden for some of those people that are on it.
Well, they won't need a water softener, they're gonna get soft water from the plant.
They may get not.
So if they want, so you're talking about going from forty-seven grains of hardness to five, and five grains, you know, talking to the guy from Eden Prairie, five grains of hardness is a pretty good number to be at for soft water in a home. Now, if you wanna go from five to zero, then you're gonna have to have a new technology, so that'll be a decision that'll have to be made by the property owner, but you won't be allowed to keep an old system hooked up to the city water, you know, to the sewer system, basically.
So you're basically, they're gonna be forced to take them out if they have the old systems, is what you're saying?
They'll have to disconnect them.
Yep.
So they can't use them, and then, like I said, you know, we're gonna be providing soft water to the public.
Right.
You know, so if it's not, you know, and the softener companies are gonna try to sell them softeners to soften it down to whatever, zero, whatever it is, you know, and so then, you know, it's gonna be a process of putting together the information so everybody knows, I've talked to some people that have already talked to me about it, and I've talked to water softener companies about it, too, but, and then we'll put that information out, we'll have to find out what people have, the softener companies might already know a majority of the homes and businesses, what they have for softener systems, but it's gonna be a big project, and that's, like I said, one of the projects that the Green Corps service member's gonna be working on is putting together that whole informational piece to the public on that.
Yeah, and I don't know, like, none of us do what five grains of hardness feels like, I mean, I'm used to, I think we're all used to probably zeros, cause isn't that what we have now?
Do we? I don't know.
I don't know.
Depends what you got your softener set at.
Right, right.
If you don't have electronic, you can go with, I don't know what it is, I couldn't tell you.
I know, I know I have an automatic one, and you can tell when it gets close to the point where it needs to start being recharged, cause it's not zero or forty-seven, you know, as the filter starts getting clogged up more, you know, you'll notice it, and sometimes you'll notice when that recharge happened, cause you can tell that the water's really, really soft, but, you know, one of the things that we have to look at, and like I said, the most surprising thing I've learned since the last time we probably talked about this is that, and actually, when the MPCA came out to look at the progress on the water plant, one of the people from MPCA said, well, just so you know, you know, there's a danger in softening soft water, which I didn't really understand, but it's something that happens, and we'll get the information on that from them or other places, so that we can let people know, because literally, you could be creating problems in your own pipes where they start leaking a little bit.
Okay, thanks for that.
So that'll be coming, that's part of what we're working on.
Good to know, thank you.
So that's something that we have to do, one of the things that I noted in here, too, is our liquor store sales dropped, I don't know if anybody noticed that, but I think it was the first year that we actually saw a change in our liquor store sales. Our liquor store sales were on a pretty straight trajectory up, and I'm not really concerned about it, but it's something that we wanna keep an eye on, we're still making money off the liquor store, and we still have the ability to transfer the money off the liquor store, but one of the things I did is I actually adjusted some of the totals in the budget for the city manager projections for the liquor store. The department projections were a little bit higher than what I thought we're seeing, so I did take a look at that. Wages, we had to know about wages, health insurance, we talked about, the library asked for a twenty-hour a week position, I did not put one in the city manager's budget for a few different reasons, but we can talk about that during the work session. Let me just, I don't know if anybody sees any items on here that you want me to specifically talk about, I included fifteen grand in the general fund budget from franchise fees, because we raised the percentage of franchise that we're getting off of the cable companies, and we'll use that money for public access, and so I did recognize that in the budget. Interest rates are...
What happens to that from this year? Cause we're already receiving that benefit in eighteen.
Probably go into, we'll probably make an adjustment into capital outlay, cause we're looking at purchasing the software package to start doing public access different. So the IT people are working on that, so we hope to have that done fairly quick.
Okay, so that will still happen this year?
Be able to use that this year.
Okay.
Yep. I don't know if there's anything specific you're interested in, I think we've talked about a lot of these. Insurances are up a little bit.
This is just the preliminary, we can, we're seeing others.
Yep.
In the work session, so...
So, and so I did provide you with the capital outlay list, and actually, the capital outlay, I anticipated about four hundred and ninety-two thousand available, I budgeted for about four hundred and fifty-nine, and then some of those things, we gotta still work out, you know, a good example is, there's actually a seventy thousand budgeted for a new lift hoist system in the garage, I talked to Brad about that, and he's not necessarily concerned maybe as much as we are about making sure that we have a safe hoist to be using in the garage. He's not necessarily concerned maybe as much as we are about making sure that we have a safe hoist to be using in the garage, but uh. Uh, we can take a look at that later and then capital projects, uh I went through with Jim Dipenter and. And Jeff Kuhn and we listed out the track, the capital projects, uh. Improvement projects, we're gonna go out to Riverview, that area, Riverview Drive, Riverview Road, Palmade Care Lane, do do reclaims. Uh, we do have a little bit of work on the airport taxi taxi way apron, we're doing some design engineering and then the big. The big item is East Seventh Street, Columbia Avenue to Line Drive, Jeff is working up a state aid project on that one. Uh, we're looking at sidewalks, we're looking at road surfaces, originally he talked about an overlay. There are some areas that are failing a little bit, so we have to look at maybe uh picking out a couple of those and. Um, doing something different with them before the final overlay is done, but that's the projects that we identified for this year and you can see the other ones that. Are identified for the years coming up. And what else do we have here?
The sidewalks, you're talking about our East Seventh Street, that's basically from Main Street up to where the funeral place is or that monument place is?
No, we're talking about Seventh Street from from, actually, we're talking about Columbia Avenue to Line Drive, but. Jeff's actually looking into uh, you know, coming from Oregon Avenue out, but he'll get back to me on that one. But we've talked about doing Seventh Street, uh overlaying Seventh Street and improving it. And then there's the long-range stuff with everything on there and then transfers in and out, so that's really the budget. Preliminary budget, we'll talk about it in October and figure out what we need to do. So we have the levy, separate resolution for the levy and and then a resolution for adopting the budget, preliminary budget.
Just a quick on that Seventh Street, everything from like just by the Eagles Park, all those people are still on their septic systems, correct? Most of the housing on the.
Yeah, this doesn't go out, this doesn't go out that far. This ends right where the water and sewer lines end, out at Line Drive.
Because we talked about.
Yep.
Holding back doing things out that direction or we haven't heard anymore from those neighborhoods on.
Well, that's a, that that would be a long-range plan to, then when the next maintenance needs to take place on that area out there. Looking at some way to run water and sewer.
So it'd be stopping where water and sewer runs up to the the townhomes.
Yeah, right, where the townhomes are.
All right.
Yep.
Along with this, with this, are we going to move on a date to, um, October twenty-fifth as suggested? I'm reading here for a work session.
We can talk about that later, that doesn't have to be a part of this resolution.
I'll move on the resolution approving the preliminary preliminary two thousand and eighteen tax levy for collection in two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on the preliminary tax levy? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bellixson? Mayor Keith?
Yes. And then we have the resolution adopting the preliminary twenty nineteen budget for the city of Morris, I will move on that resolution.
I'll second that.
Any dis- further discussion on the budget? We'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Bellixson? Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes. Yeah, we have a resolution approving the renewal of a climate protection partnership agreement with Sarbeck Germany.
So we had a three-year agreement with them, they're interested in continuing on that agreement. Uh, I would recommend that we wanna continue on that agreement and actually they're gonna be coming here. Mayor Rus is gonna be coming with Guido and actually I think Professor Vedder is coming back. Um, he's taken a real interest in Morris, I think, so I think he wants to come back and look at some of the things that are going on and uh. I would recommend that you just pass a resolution approving the renewal and then I suggested, I don't know if you're available, October first, Mayor. But they're gonna have a a big event down in the Twin Cities with.
I'll make it happen.
All the delegation and then we can have a nice formal signing ceremony down there. On Sunday?
I'll make it happen.
Monday, yeah, we're we're gonna, I think some of us are gonna drive down and come back. And some people are gonna stay overnight and then bring the mayor and Guido back. So we could probably drive down and come back, that's a good idea, whatever works.
We don't have a timeframe on this resolution?
No, I think I think we'll leave it open.
Just.
Yep, we'll just stay partners with them until we get sick of each other. It doesn't really involve us being, other than the Morris model is gonna continue on and then we'll probably continue to Skype. With them as we get a chance to do it, I know there's at least what, one new student, I look at Sid cuz she's out of college. Uh, there's at least one new student that came in that speaks German. That's part of this process or there's a couple of students taking German and.
Oh, yes.
So I know Mackenzie's back.
Yeah, she's back.
So she was actually in Germany for a while and she's back now, so. Um, you know, it's kinda kinda interesting, the process and whether or not, I think there's another student might come here from Germany too, like uh. Like we've had seen in the past.
Well, I think we've opened the doors, we've opened our eyes and like you say, anything we can do to conserve energy. To work towards bettering everything, if you believe in global warming or not, the the saving the energy. Using things that make sense, the lights, it just, I think it's a a great partnership working back and forth, so. I would make the resolution approving the renewal of our climate protection partnership agreement with Sarbeck Germany.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other uh further discussion on the resolution? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bellixson? Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes. A resolution authorizing a design engineering contract for the airport apron and taxi lane reconstruction project.
I think we did the grant agreement at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so this is just the uh the contract with the engineer to do the design work and um. Our share of it is a small portion, as I indicated in here, and then the rest is picked up by the state and federal government. And then the only other thing I think, I don't know if I. I might have, did I, I don't know if I mentioned it in my newsletter, but uh. Or did I mention it in here, it it looks like there might be some money available to pay for this project.
Because I was just gonna question that, it was listed here with the resolution.
It was in the resolution. Um, there's like a billion and a half additional federal money that's been allocated out for airports. And so I, you might remember when we did Oregon Avenue, they had additional money allocated out for streets. And we got a million dollars out of that, well, for airports, they're looking for projects that are ready to go and so we're actually gonna apply for a grant. From that pot and then they're actually giving out money at a hundred percent. So it could be you do the design engineering, apply for the grant, and then they wind up uh picking up the total cost of doing that work, which would be awesome. Cuz we're looking at probably sixty thousand dollars a year for two years to to do that work. That we have to try to find from capital outlay and this is maintenance work, you know, to improve the apron and the taxiway. So it's not, it's not something new that we're doing out there, so hopefully that all works out.
Any idea the timeframe on the engineering, the design engineering process to get it, so they'll know the cost?
Um, yeah, I I don't know exactly.
I guess it just, that we were basically going ahead to do the engineering and the funding of that and it normally takes quite a while, I just.
Yeah, this isn't that big of a project, it's not, it's not a real technical project.
It it's not a big project, but they put a big price tag on it.
Well, it's.
Yeah.
See, I don't know what I'm getting for that, but wow.
They make fun of lawyers, but engineers get paid pretty good.
So move there.
But it's, you know, it's feder- the federal rules and regulations and all that stuff.
Yeah.
They gotta do them by, so.
Okay, so we have the resolution authorizing the engineering contract.
I'll move on that resolution authorizing the design engineering contract for the airport apron and taxi line reconstruction project.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call on that resolution, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Bellixson? Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes. City managers report.
Um, yeah, there's a couple of things in here, um. We get, we got the seventy-five hundred dollar grant from West Central Initiative to run to have a retreat with the Morris Model Partners. Uh, and we talked about doing it up at Camp Ripley, actually Mike Reese has taken the lead on organizing that whole thing. And uh the dates that were picked were based upon what all the partners thought would work for them, I know it doesn't work for some people. But uh we already have the money in hand, so so we just needed to try to get this locked in and and get it set up, there's gonna be a facilitator up there and. And originally, we're looking at the first and second, but then that event down in the Twin Cities on the first and the Germans are actually here, they're during that week and so. We moved it to this date and and uh there'll be an invite coming out for you for that. Uh, if you wanna go up there and participate in that, you can. So that's one item, uh city council uh work session uh to talk about the budget and, you know, I threw out a date for that. One of the things that was mentioned before at a council meeting was talking about the hundred projects, uh that's maybe a good time to do that, but. Uh, one of the other things that came up was uh whether or not, I think Kim maybe talked to somebody about. The Morris Model meetings are always in the mornings or out at the university and whether or not you'd be interested in having one after a council meeting, maybe for an hour. So you can have a chance to be part of that. Uh, cuz typically it's us and then whoever, you know, the university people, the West Central Research and Outreach people, myself and students, there's some really. Really good students that are working on this for us and putting stuff together, so I just threw all that stuff out for you to consider.
End of October would probably be better for me than the end of September, just. I've got a few irons in the fire on the. Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth of September, I'm ready for doing the work session, just if we did that after our budget or after our work session.
Yeah, we, yeah, we could do it that way, get some pizza and stuff.
I guess it's far.
Later's year for me now is is better.
That's Thursday night, that's a Thursday.
Yep, that's the way we've been doing them, but it does, it's up to you.
It doesn't have to be a Thursday for me, I guess pretty much any night of the week, I guess, fishing?
Full, sit down.
Full. I said it's a waste of sleep.
No, any night of the week is fine with me.
Tuesday now?
But it's always been.
Well, I thought it was Tuesday, long time ago, long time ago, Tuesday. Okay.
Bye.
Well, as far as the, the second, the second meeting Tuesday after that is fine for me, the first meeting is the one where I got.
Okay, so the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth would be wonderful for me, but it wouldn't work for.
Of what, September?
September. And that's possible, it'll work for me too, I just, if that works, we'll just go for it and see what happens, I just.
Right.
I'm okay with that too. Twenty-fifth is.
Yeah.
It it should work for me, just.
So that's for.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We talking for the meeting with the Morris Model?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then how about the work session?
Work session, you you had said.
The twenty-fifth is a.
So that works too?
That's a Thursday, October twenty-fifth?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yep, okay. That works.
It works. So work the the twenty-fifth of both months?
You have a motion on that?
Yeah, we could do that for ju- for uh both of them or?
Yeah, yeah, for both of them, just do them all in one motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we uh do a work session with the Morris Model if that works out. Excuse me. September twenty-fifth. And a work session after, on October twenty-fifth for budget work session.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Times on those?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I didn't, did we just put a time on the uh?
Oh.
Obviously, the time on the first one's gonna be after a meeting.
After the meeting, the other one, I think we did it at same time, five fifteen.
Yeah, five, five fifteen. And then after the meeting on the twenty-fifth, or September. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Anything else on the?
I just got a question on the Green River Road. And the Green River, we talked about, I thought we we didn't do any of the clearing out of the Green River, we left pretty much everything, but I thought before we did the seeding or planting. We were gonna clean out the river, the bottom of the river some, get some stuff out of there, it's really thick and I know you talked about. Out by the ballpark, the the creek out there needing to get cleaned out because it's slowing down the flow of water, if that's an issue with us, I guess. Just seeing all the stuff, the trees that are in the bottom, the bed of the river, if that's something that's slowing down our water. Backing up into our system, but it's it's gonna need to get done, I think it should get done sooner than later to have that water flow because that's. All the stormwater pretty much is roaring out more soon down the river.
About taking some of the trees out of the creek.
The stuff that's in the creek.
But it's, you know, and I know that there's a lot of thistle now in and amongst the 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 plants down by the creek. In between the dogwoods and the actual water, uh so I'm gonna talk to Jim about that, but uh. But yeah, I think there's still some discussion about looking at taking a couple of the trees that are out right in the water. But uh, um, Jim, Jim and those guys can look at that with the tree board.
I guess I just wanna make sure we're not slowing or backing up water and I know as we keep progressing and doing our street projects, it's the. The water that's flowing into our sanitary when we're popping the lids off and it's causing some of our problem and it's just. When that stuff all comes, it looks like the new culverts or bridges are taking care of the flow to getting it through. On the two streets there where we put those in, but just not to back it up.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Cuz it'll actually come out out of the creek bed and come up through those dogwoods that live through that.
And I wasn't even understanding that we were gonna put, keep a grass strip all the way around that project, it seems like they only ran it down to Eleanor. You know, from the curb in about ten, fifteen feet or so, they left the grass before they killed it and then from Eleanor all the way down to. The bypass, they killed it right up to the curb.
Yeah, it's all been replanted and the.
Well, I just, I thought we said that we wanted to keep that taller grass and wildfires off of the curbs and back a little ways. It just, I thought, I thought it was gonna go all the way out to twenty, or to the bypass, but is there anything they can do about that?
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah.
If they just mow, if they just mow the wild grasses so that, yeah, if there's.
I'm a little, I'm just concerned cuz when you come out of.
You can see.
You can see, you and you got tall grass on right up to the curb there and you're in a small car, you probably, maybe you have.
Yeah, we had a problem with that and they went out and mowed out there to knock that back, so. Yeah, I think, I think, I think they just never got a chance to get back to it once it was seeded and stuff and. And then they'll get into a normal rotation with how they're gonna deal with that.
Well, the main thing is if they don't end up mowing as much as we mowed before.
Yeah, it will.
You know, our whole.
I think you just keep it, keep it away from the journeying faders so you can see.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The only, the only other thing I was gonna say is I'm assuming that you support the liquor store issue.
Uh, yeah.
Cuz there is a, there's a big push by uh big retailers, the big box real, real retailers, whether they're liquor or. You know, the Walmarts of the world or whatever they are to to get liquor into grocery stores. And uh we oppose that, the league I think opposes that, I'm assuming we oppose that, but uh we do, there is. I'm assuming we oppose that, but we do, there is a state law that allows us to be the only off-sale sales place.
Well, and I think to that, it's not that, you know, I mean, it's, it's good for the city, it reduces our taxes.
Right.
So you're, you're actually not buying from somebody else that's not reducing your taxes, so I, in that sense, I agree with it. I mean, it's, it's a good, it's good for the city, good for the people.
One of, one of the issues, one of the issues talked about at the legislature is there are city-owned liquor stores in Minnesota that are getting a tax levy to keep their doors open, so they're actually subsidizing their local liquor store, because they can't make enough profits to keep them going, and it's like, I don't understand that at all. But ours is one of the more profitable liquor stores when you look at the, you know, what we're doing, and, you know, I think Edina was the big one that they're talking about, that, you know, there's big boxes all around.
Well, right, yeah, they just got tons of places to go.
Yeah, I would guess that our official stance would be, we are opposed.
I agree.
All right. That's all I got.
Okay, and we have informational items, we got the Morris Police Department media reports, keeping busy.
Thanks for the report, Chief.
Yes, thank you. Any other information to come before the council? Thank you.